Okay, let's pull the door and move on.
And I watch them doing it every time I go through and I say, "Should I do that? Should I do that?"
LeBron will be back in a second.
Presentation.
So, the next item is a presentation by Thomas W. Fahey, Junior Agent for Dorset Crossing, owner for a site plan approval for Lot C, especially housing on the property located. You don't have to, you have a call you have to read for this?
No.
It's not a public hearing. So, if you have a presentation or questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Please just go to the microphone. Oh, sorry, thanks so much.
We are being recorded.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. For the record, Tom Fahey, I'm an attorney. I represent the applicant, Ken Regan, Regan Development. And as you know, we were here previously for our approval of the change of zone to PAD and for the approval of the general plan of development. And now, we're back before you for the site plan approval. And we have, you should have a letter from the design review. And we do understand that we're going to give our presentation this evening, but because Wetlands isn't meeting until tomorrow, you won't be able to act on this tonight because you'll need a letter, which will probably be a no jurisdiction letter, but some form of a letter from Wetlands before you can formally act. So, we intend to give you a concise presentation this evening and to be available for any questions. And we're going to start with Dave Ziyaks, our engineer, and then he'll turn it over to our architect and to Mr. Regan. Tom Barton is our architect, and Ken Regan is here as well to make some brief comments and also to answer your questions. Dave?
My name's Dave Ziyaks. I'm with F.A. Heska Associates. We're located over in East Granby. And I must say, I've never seen such a huge room of happy people coming out of the hallway before. Usually, when you have this many people for a public hearing, it's just not good.
As a speaker, it was very efficient.
So, that was, it's nice that seems like everybody's reached some sort of consensus.
Almost.
But anyhow, with us this evening, if you recall with the master PAD plan that this commission approved back a couple of months ago, the parcel, that's the, you know, the subject parcel of this evening is what we call Lot C, which is this parcel right here. It's 2.15 acres of land. And it will have frontage on what we're still calling the Newtown Road. We're waiting for a name to come up from, I guess it's staff's responsibility to come up with the name, I'm not sure. But maybe it'll be Newtown Road, I don't know, you know. But right now, we're calling it Newtown Road. So, Dorset Crossing Drive will be constructed all the way up to where the roundabout will be located, and then the Newtown Road will be extended down to gain access to Lot C. And what we're proposing is a single building, the 48 units of special needs housing, which Ken will talk about in a little more detail to you. The footprint of the building will be 17,400 square feet, three stories tall. And we have, again, 48 units. We'll have 57 parking spaces, of which 11 of those will be ADA handicap parking, which is a much higher ratio than you normally have for a conventional parking area, but we need that for our residents, many of whom will have, the ones that do drive will have, you know, accessibility issues and need the special parking. The site itself will be fully ADA compatible. Obviously, we've spent a lot of time and extra effort making this site a little bit more accessible than you would on a more, you know, conventional apartment site. It will be tied into the public sidewalk system that's going to be provided throughout Dorset Crossing, and there will be an opportunity to connect it in to the large open space that will be located next to this. What makes this site so nice is, as you can see on the aerial photo, is it really has, other than our little CL&amp;P facility that's being enlarged, it really has a lot of space around it. So, it's going to provide a nice quiet location for residential living. This is a blow-up of the site, so you can see the building and the relationship. The parking lot will be very conventional, again, 57 parking spaces. And one of the nice features here is the way that the building is positioned is as you're driving up Newtown Road, you'll get to see the full face of the building, and you'll see Tom Barton's architecture, which is pretty spectacular. So, actually, it's perpendicular to the Newtown Road, so really a small portion, only a small portion of the large building really is noticeable as you're driving by. You really have the view of it as you're coming up the hill. And what's given us this great opportunity to set up a nice private area behind here for the residents here. Patio designs can be very heavily landscaped, and there's kind of an interesting feature here on the lot is this is actually Saxon Brook down here with the Wetlands corridor associated with it. And there's a natural birmingham area that exists over here on this westerly portion of the site, which is heavily vegetated. So, it gives us a nice opportunity to kind of tuck the building in over in that location and provide a really nice quiet, you know, space for the residents in the building. Another nice feature is we have sort of a community garden area over here, which will be custom designed so that folks who may be in a wheelchair will be able to gain access to its raised planters. So, if they're doing seasonal vegetables and plantings and things of that nature, they'll be able to, you know, access the garden in a special way. So, all in all, we have, the site lighting will be very modest. It's going to match the site lighting that's being installed in the commercial end of Dorset Crossing. It's 16-foot-high poles, kind of boring shoebox-style lighting, but that's exactly what we want. We want it to, you know, sort of just be in the background. The lighting, the public lighting is coming up the new road, which is going to be the town standard lighting. And that will go all the entire length of all the public walkways, or roadways, rather, through the project. So, that's, you're going to start seeing that installed like next week. If you drive by the site, you'll start to see the site, the light poles and things coming up.
Iron horse, like that type of thing?
Yeah, it's a little bit more, I'll say, updated or so, but it's the Newtown standard that they've worked out with CL&amp;P. There is, of course, an extensive landscaping plan. You saw the comments from design review. We had a unanimous recommendation from them, so I think they're pretty excited about the project as well. They like the landscape and they like the architecture. I've received some staff comments so far. We got some from your town engineer, Rich, and he gave a positive review of the drainage system. This is getting connected into the overall macro drainage system of Dorset Crossing, so it includes, you know, all the latest features for water quality control. The roof water from the building will be going into an infiltrator system to replicate sort of some of the infiltration that's taking place on the site now. The bulk of the drainage goes down to our large detention basin that we've already built on the site. That's all part of the big Dorset Crossing project, so really no impact to, new impact to Wetlands or any of the other water resources, Saxon Brook. And we've passed around the plans to the fire marshal and others. I haven't seen any comments yet from the fire marshal. But he reviewed the master plan. It didn't have any problems with the overall layout, but we may get some specific comments from him regarding this project. And that's it. It's a fairly simple site. I think it's going to be a spectacular site. It's going to be sitting up really at the highest point at Dorset Crossing. We've positioned it to minimize any interference with the, you know, the CL&amp;P overhead wires. We've turned the building such to minimize any impact from those. And we've had an opportunity to really create this really nice private space behind the buildings, which I think the residents are going to really like. At this point, I think I'll turn it over to Tom Barton, and he'll go over the architecture, which, again, the design review committee really, really liked and appreciated.
Got a couple exhibits that we use here. This is the front elevation. And... Maybe just prop it up a little bit here. And this is a sample board that we used for the design review earlier, but I think it gives you a sense of the materials, the colors that we're proposing. But what we're looking at is a 17,400-square-foot floor plate, a total of 48 units for special needs residents. We're looking at people with multiple sclerosis, and they have a variety of needs that go beyond the classic handicap requirements. So, there's, this is very special in the way these, we have wider doors than you normally have. We have automatic door openers on all the units. There's a lot of things that we take beyond the normal standards that you see. Interestingly, this is the second facility we've done with the Regans, and it is the third facility, I guess, in the country at this point. So, assuming you approve this, will be the third one on the ground, and that's very exciting. The first facility we did together was hugely successful down in New Jersey. I won't steal all Ken's accolades here, but it was a wonderful facility, and it was very powerful at the opening, seeing how it was providing for the need of a, with MS, it's a lot of the population ends up in nursing homes in facilities that are, quite frankly, age inappropriate. There's a lot of younger population with MS. And I don't pretend to be an expert, but seeing someone in their 20s with this affliction being able to live in a facility that wasn't a nursing home, where there are people their own age, people with similar interests, people, you know, just that they could relate to. So, it was, it was very powerful. But in any event, we have 38 one-bedroom units and 10 two-bedroom units for a total of 48 units. It's a three-story protected wood frame building, fully fire-suppressed. It is designed in an architectural style that we think is very appropriate for Simsbury. We used a variety of materials from horizontal siding, cedar shake. The roof forms borrow from a lot of classic forms. The trim and detailing is very classic in nature, the double-hung windows. We've also designed the roof forms so that all the mechanical equipment is hidden behind the sloped roof elements, so you don't see the mechanical equipment from the street. And then we, and it helps us maintain, will minimize the noise, but also maintain that residential character. One of the nice things about this building, unlike a lot of buildings that you might see, it's a four-sided building. So, by that, I mean that the rear elevation illustrated here is almost of the same quality and level of detail as the front. And then, one of the comments from your design review people was the feeling that we needed to do a little more with the side elevations, and this reflects our response to their concerns, and I think was well-received in our meeting last week. But I think it's an attractive building. We break up the mass of the building by the use of varieties of materials and colors. We break up the height by the strong horizontal elements that we're using. And again, we stay in a traditional vernacular, architectural vernacular that I think is appropriate for the community. One other thing I do need to mention is there are common amenities provided mostly relative to PT, physical therapy issues, and some socializing areas within the building that are common. They go out, much of those areas are accessed out into that rear patio area that you saw on the site plan. I don't have much more to present unless you have any questions or comments or whatever.
Good.
Thank you very much.
Exactly the right number for once.
My name, as was said before, is Ken Regan. I am the Vice President of Regan Development Corporation. We are a family business that specializes in affordable housing and especially in special needs housing. I'm going to speak fairly briefly to you this evening because I was before you, probably about a month or two ago, when you went through the PAD approval earlier, and it's a similar situation. But what we're talking about doing here, as has been mentioned, is special needs housing. There's going to be two different populations that we're going to be serving. The first, and the one that was discussed earlier, is people who are living with multiple sclerosis. Some of those folks will be people, as Tom mentioned, that we're going to really be able to almost rescue out of nursing homes. People who are generally younger than the mean age of people in nursing homes, and some of which don't really need to be in nursing homes. They have some need for accessible housing. They have some need for supportive services, which is going to be something that's included in the package that we're talking about, but really don't need 24-hour skilled nursing care. And the desire here, and we're working in partnership with the National Multiple Sclerosis Society Connecticut chapter, is to create the ability to give those people and other people with MS the ability to live in accessible housing at an affordable level. Right now, there's about 6,000 people in the state of Connecticut who have multiple sclerosis. Several hundred of those people are living in nursing facilities, probably about 60 to 70 of those people are right here in Hartford County. And we're hoping that although we won't be able to help all of them, we'll be able to help some of those people. And that's really the desire here. Some other people, populations, we're talking about people who are not necessarily in nursing care, but may be stuck on the second floor or a third floor of a walk-up building. And by stuck, I mean somebody has to carry those people out. And I've met people here in Connecticut that are in exactly that situation. This type of facility, being 100% accessible, will give those people the freedom to live an independent lifestyle. And as I said, we'll have some supportive services available and coordinated for them, whether it be home care assistance, whether it be transportation coordination, to make sure that we're not putting people from either an institutional setting or a setting where they're stuck from an accessibility standpoint into another setting that they won't have a full ability to live their life independently. As has been said, we're building 40 apartments, 48 total apartments, with 40 of them will be set aside for people living with MS. The other eight apartments we are talking about are people who are living with disabilities right here in the community. When we first came to speak with the people in town and the administration about what we wanted to do, they said to us, "We like, we really like the idea of what you're doing for MS, but we also have a group of people with disabilities that are local that could really benefit from the accessible housing that you're talking about." And so, both from the first selectman and others that we've spoken to, we said, "Okay, we'll take eight of the units that we would like to build and set them aside for people who have the same or similar needs in terms of accessibility but don't necessarily have MS." And so, that is sort of the other piece, the other population that we're going to be helping. We, as you can see, have designed something that we believe is something that fits with the community. The comments that we got at the design review commission reflected that with the corrections that they asked us to make and enhancements that Tom has made. I think we're very excited about this project. One of the other pieces that we've been able to secure, which is something very difficult in the state of Connecticut, is we've been able to secure rental assistance for 40 of the units that we're going to have. And what that means is really a financial safety net for the people we're talking about. Very often, people in the population that we're talking about are no longer able to work. They perhaps get social security disability in a large part. Sometimes, they'll be able to get, benefit from a small pension from the job that they were on prior to not being able to work anymore. But the reality is, is that with MS, it very often, it's a very unpredictable disease. So, whereas someone might be able to work part-time at one point, maybe their MS flares up and they're not able to do that anymore. Or, God forbid, but does definitely happen, people's situation goes downhill a little bit, and they're not able to keep up the same schedule and abilities that they had before. The rental assistance that we've been able to secure from the state, and we're very excited about this, is going to make sure that those people have a very safe and secure financial setting, so that if their income drops, the ability to pay the rent will still be there, and their security and safety in their home will still be there. As I said, I was going to try and keep this short, so if there's any questions, I'm certainly happy to answer them. And if not, then I think I will turn it back over to Tom.
It's, just curious about the management of the building. Is it through your company, or who manages the building?
The building will be owned by my company. It will be, the service side of the abilities that we're talking about with people will be handled by the National MS Society. We will have a third-party manager who will be managing the building. It's a company that we've done business with in the past and has a very good reputation as well with the state officials that we work with. The name of the company is DeMarco Management.
Right. And the financial that you've secured, the financing that you've secured to allow them to be accessible or to be affordable, where is that?
It's actually something that we're in the process of applying for, so we haven't quite secured all the financing that we need. The way that a project like this works, in order to get the rents down to a level that are affordable to the people we're talking about, we do two things. The rental assistance that I was talking about, and on the other side of it, we go to the state Connecticut Housing Finance Authority and try to secure affordable housing, tax credits, and other funding through the Department of Economic and Community Development. We've met with both of those agencies, and they're state agencies, and have really gotten an excitement from them, because as was said earlier, this is really not something that's been done on the East Coast. This would be the second one. There is, we've done some market studies among this population, which is a very specialized type of market study, but the demand for this is unfortunately quite huge. And so, it is something that as we go to the state funding sources on up to the governor's office even, there's been just a general excitement about trying to bring this services and housing needs to this population, because it's something that has not traditionally been done. Very often, and it's not a criticism of anybody, but very often, states will focus on perhaps people with developmental disabilities, and they've done a fairly good job about providing housing, whether it be through group homes or other types of settings. This population, adult onset disabilities, is not an area where any states around the country have been very active. And so, to the extent that we can provide a model that is somewhat based on the traditional affordable housing-type facilities, but the population is based on this, you know, care need and the MS population, it's really something that has been something that the state has been excited about. I can't say for sure whether we're going to fund it, and it is a competitive process, but it's one that as we go through the process, we've gotten very positive responses thus far.
If you don't get the funding, what happens?
We have to apply again. So, any, we're not going to be able to start building this complex unless we get that funding. And so, from the town's perspective, we're not going to be, and it's interesting that we were here on the evening where you were hearing, you know, changes in finance, in age restrictions and such. If we don't get financing, we don't build this project. It's a very specialized project. The financing tools are only geared to do what we want to do here. And so, if for some reason we go through the competitive process, which is frankly going to take place this fall, and they'll make announcements probably the early part of next year, the options are not do it with MS or do it with something else. It's either do it with MS or don't develop the project. And thankfully, Tony Giorgio and his partners have been very supportive of the mission that we're trying to do here as well. And they frankly are doing this at a lesser number than they probably would be getting if we went out on the market and tried to build market-rate housing. But there's a real desire from that partnership to team up with us to try and do something that just isn't being done and is going to be so helpful. You know, as was mentioned earlier by Tom, the building that, I gave out some brochures just so you could look at the building that we did in New Jersey, which is a very similar population, there's people in that building that are, you know, there's a woman in that building that was 29 years old. She was living in a nursing home. She thought she was going to be living in a nursing home for the rest of her life. She now has the freedom and ability to live independently with the services that we're helping to coordinate for her. It's more the norm than the aberration. It's something that, as we do this as a team with the town and with Tony's, you know, Tony's partners and Tony, it's something that really is going to be something we can all be proud of. And it's not something we're going to do unless we can do it. And what I didn't say this evening, but it gets a little bit to the question you had about who's managing the building. We do this as a long-term investment, not just because of the model that I have as a business, which is to do these sort of, they're not huge moneymakers along the way, but 15 years from now or 30 years from now, we look at them as some, as an opportunity to have a financial vehicle that frankly, my kids will probably use. But the most important thing, and the real reason that I'm here, and I didn't mention it to you here tonight, but the reason that I'm involved in the MS housing in the first place is I was diagnosed with MS nine years ago. Knock on wood, I've been fairly healthy and been able to keep things in a sense that I would hope they would be. But I'm not looking at this as either to build it and walk away or to build it and make money. We're doing this as a mission to help people with MS. And it's something that, as a town, I would hope that, you know, people would see that and say, "Well, these people are for real. They're going to do this, and they're going to be here, not just in year one, not just in year five, but 15 years and 30 years down the road, this is going to be MS housing." And it's going to be that way until, you know, with God's blessing, we'll be able to cure MS, and it won't be needed, and we'll hopefully have other populations that we can help at that point. But unfortunately, that's a long way down the road at this point.
Couple of questions.
Sure.
If I might. Will you have the flexibility to lease a unit to someone who does not have MS but a comparable disease? Well, I don't know what's comparable, but another serious...
It's a, that's a very good question. What we generally do is we set up service packages for the building that are designed to meet the needs of certain types of disabilities. So, in this case, we will set up a service package specifically to meet the needs of people with MS. Because the town has asked us to help people with other disabilities, we're going to also set up a separate service package for people that come in. So, to get to your point directly, is that if there are people with other disabilities that fit those qualifications, we will likely be able to rent units to them.
Beyond the eight?
It has not yet been, I don't want to answer you the wrong way, because we have to work with fair housing issues and make sure we do it properly. What we hope is that we're doing this for people with MS. What we've done in other places where this same question came up is that what we've said is that if we ever got to the point where there wasn't people to fill this with MS, and I have a 250-person waiting list on that building in New Jersey, so I don't know that we'll ever get to that point. But if we ever got to that point due to advances in disease cures or what have you, then what we've done in other places is that we've said other neurological diseases to get to the point of how we can do that, whether it be Alzheimer's, whether it be Parkinson's, whether it be other types of neurological-based diseases, that's what we've done. I'm not sure that we would do that here, and we certainly would be open to speaking with your board or the selectmen to see what, you know, how they wanted to treat that. But, you know, our real goal here is to help people with MS.
Do you anticipate affiliating with any of the local hospitals?
That's an excellent question. I appreciate you bringing it up. What we like, the reason, one of the reasons we're doing this is the affiliation that the MS Society already has with St. Francis. There is an MS center, and one of the, one of the leading MS centers frankly in rehabilitation in the country is probably about a 15-minute ride from here. What we hope to do, and we're working with the MS Society now, is to have a transport situation that will allow people to use that MS center. And the second thing, and it's not something that has actually come to fruition, but we hope to speak to St. Francis about seeing whether they will do a satellite maybe once a week where their MS doctors will come out to either our facility or other space at Dorset Crossing. It's a little bit up in the air right now, but it's something that we hope that they will be interested in doing. But right off the bat, the relationship with St. Francis is there and will grow because of the relationship the MS Society already has with that facility there.
Thank you.
Assuming you have more applicants than you're going to have units, how do you select who gets to be in this?
Generally, it's done on a first-come, first-served basis. There are, as I said earlier, some fair housing issues. What we have not been able to do successfully is to do it by disease course or disability status. But what we've done in other places and what's worked from a fair housing standpoint is basically a first-come, first-served situation. We do actually do some screening, what we call health and safety screening, prior to somebody moving in, more because we want to make sure that if somebody's going to be in this complex, their care needs are not larger than what would be an independent housing need with some supportive services. We have been fairly successful with that at our other complex, and the one that was, the first one that was done out in Minnesota has sort of showed us the way of how to do that. With MS, there is some danger that people will progress in their MS, and we are not in the business of kicking people out, so we are really looking to, you know, sort of help people in place to the extent that they can be. On occasion, we may lose some people to a nursing facility if that's the care needs that they have. And that's the benefit of having the MS Society as our, as our service coordinator and our partner on this, is that they have, you know, substantial experience and social workers to sort of help people through all of the processes. So, even the people that we might not be able to initially house here, the MS Society has made a commitment to, you know, to help those people as well, to help find them appropriate spots if they can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate the time.
That's all we have.
What's that? That's it? All right. So, I think the issue for us is that we can't technically approve this until the Conservation Commission?
Right. Let me, two things, Mr. Chairman. Let me just mention, I did hear today from the Fire Marshal, just for the record, and he has approved the plan as submitted. So, I want to be clear about that. I just learned that this morning. Second thing is, as you're correct, that we need to wait for the Wetlands Commission, Conservation Commission, which is meeting tomorrow evening. So happens that if the commission has no other questions, we could perhaps put this on our next agenda on the 30th, if there are any questions. Anything comes up in the meantime, I can certainly try to field that question, get it to the applicant prior to your next meeting. But I would be hope, hope that we could...
Is the plan to do this building by building, the site plan?
Well, this is just one site, one lot, one building.
But the whole Dorset Crossing thing?
There's, they were like, Ned, they were like, you call this parcel C, right? And you guys are all parcel C. You're not...
There are six lots.
Yeah. So, it's probably parcel by parcel. Is that what we plan to do?
Yeah.
Right.
And I, doesn't speak to this particular application, but in each time we see something, we show this road that's on property that they don't own, that goes out to the road to the airport. Or any plan, you know, I mean, I get nervous about things that seem to be on the plan but don't seem to be under the control of the applicant.
Didn't they, they made the swap with the town of Simsbury.
We're working on finishing the details of that right now. That final language on the swap is in front of the Department of Transportation right now at the AG's office. The road that's shown on this plan is the same road, and the road that's not on their property, they don't have any control over, obviously.
Right.
But the road that is on their property, portion of that will be constructed as part of this project by Dorset Crossing.
Is that lining up with Walcott?
Walcott, yeah, right.
This portion here...
That part right there.
...is owned by another owner. This portion here up to the driveway of this facility will all be constructed by Dorset Crossing.
Did he mention there are only, the road's only going as far as this building?
That's correct, right now. There's no need for it to go further yet than...
This building is the purple one, right?
Yes.
Right.
No.
Home, sorry.
It'll go just past the driveway servicing this building right now.
Okay.
But the right-of-way is going to be established and deeded to the town right up front, once the subdivision is recorded. So, the rights to build the road will be there. Either Dorset will continue building the road piece by piece or the...
Because the road will come in off of Hop Meadow Street, the lower one?
This, the road's already cut.
That's already...
You're going to come in, you're going to have the roundabout in place and then out to this building.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Built the town standards with sidewalks, with lighting.
Any other questions? We'll have these folks here. All right. Thank you very much, and we will look forward to acting on this most likely at our July 30th special meeting. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Great question. Okay. Other matters is may properly, what? Oh, properly come before the commission. Here's something new. Workforce housing and IHZ discussion.
This Hyrum is persistent.
Did you sneak that on there?
It's going to be, it's going to be brief, right, Hyrum?
No.
It's on here every time.
Something new.
We're only in a half a page mood right now.
Yeah.
It's double-sided, half-page.
Just light reading for tonight.
And I fully understand the hour and the commission's patience during this whole process. Very, very responsible for that. As you know, we got the incentive housing zone grant. We talked about that. We had a public hearing on that. And my take from that, the end of that public hearing, was that the commission is not necessarily opposed to workforce housing, in fact, would favor it in some other form. There were a couple of things that were not the way the commission would like it, as far as the workforce housing regulation went that time. What I've done is taken basically three different requirements that I think that the commission would be looking for. A new regulation reconstructed and then brought back to you for your consideration, would have to consider the site requirements. Typically, we would want to know whether it's properly served by sewer or whether it's served by septic system, safe access in terms of traffic and transportation, adequate stormwater. And then the question I have, number four, is, and you don't need to answer this this evening, but please give us some thought as to whether residential zones should be included in this regulation or not, whether it should just be PAD zones or not, or whether there should be some other specific designation. I think that's a consideration that we need to have you take a look at. Believe it or not, there already are sections of our regulations which talk about the fact that affordable housing can be built in any residential zone in town by special exception. So, it's not that far away, and people are going to get all nervous when they hear about it, but it's already there. So, second thing that I'd just like you to consider is that informal discussions with zoning commission, certainly from my point of view, would continue to be encouraged. Applicants would come in ahead of time and talk to you, to you about their particular plans, get your feedback early on, to find out whether that's a good idea or a bad idea or not. The application for development will be done on a site-by-site basis. I think the commission was fairly clear about this. They didn't want to necessarily see something spread town-wide. That special permit process, site plan special permit process, and whether this is by purely replacement zone or whether it's an overlay zone, we can sort of talk about that, but need to get some input from the commission on that. And after the regulations are modified to allow this in those other areas. And then a preliminary site plan showing the basic layout, density, stormwater, schematic architecture, things like that. Then the workforce housing zone, I just called it that. You can call it whatever you like, or we can rename it something else. But these requirements would contain adequate safeguards, protect the community as a whole, and we talk about values, property values, neighborhood characters, so on. So, those would be process, sort of process requirements. And then the final thing I had were sort of detailed site plan requirements. These are really no different than things you normally see now. I think tonight, you've seen some site plans which have, have been sort of originally prepared and then refined and then refined and re-refined to represent what the different commissions that they've gone through saw. So, I think typical detailed site plans would be something you'd want to see at some point in the end of this process. But certainly not to spend all that time and effort and money at the beginning of the process before they had an idea of whether they would go forward or not. And then at that point in time, there wouldn't be another public hearing because it would have already been held on the original concept. So, that's basically what we...
And the concept on a site-by-site basis?
Yes. In other words, you would look at that first and decide, "Do we like this? Don't we like it?" The schematic plans would have some basic layout, some circulation, some basic architecture, things like that. Talk a little bit about density. Some of the sites are going to be limited by size. The way, you know...
How do these differ then from just a straight subdivision, especially if it's already zoned residential?
It might not be a subdivision, you know, honestly. First of all, I'd just like to introduce Glenn Chalder. Glenn from Planometrics. Some of you may know Glenn. Glenn's agreed to work with us on this and help out to finish up this process that Concord Square started. So, if Glenn has anything to add, please, please feel free, Glenn. There wouldn't necessarily be a subdivision, though. I think that they could be individual sites. They could be set up as apartments. They could be set up as condominiums.
Oh, they may multiple unit.
And most likely, that would be the case.
I just keep, I keep coming back to the...
Terracotta Mill.
No, I'm thinking more of the one that was...
Fire Town Road.
Yeah, the Fire Town and Plank Hill Road, which really was, I mean, we had, seemed to me like we had several options there. We could have, if it was rezoned to residential and then subdivided into four units, I think that, he could have accomplished exactly the same thing without all of the hoo-ha because the surrounding neighborhood was zoned quarter acre lots.
Yeah. You know, and I think this, this regulation could, could well provide that vehicle. You know, if the commission feels comfortable with that, I think that that's certainly a good possibility.
But again, I mean, is that, the subdivisions are not the purview of the zoning commission.
Correct.
They're the purview of the planning commission.
That's right. And just like we coordinate the PAD and we say if it has to go through the subdivision processes, and part is the PAD, it has to go planning commission first or get that taken care of.
It seems we also have that open-ended question on who would be the administrator, how we would handle that, or is that not going to be part of this?
Well, we're talking, yeah, we're talking about apples and oranges here. I mean, the example I gave was four individual lots with individual houses.
Oh, no, no, I understand.
But you're talking about a incentive housing zone, I mean, a, a building unit where somebody was going to charge rents and make sure that the people qualified and otherwise.
That's not an issue under this any longer?
I think, I don't know, Glenn, maybe you want to talk, how some of the other towns do it. It's always tricky.
Yeah, I think, just really quickly, Glenn Chalder, I'm a secondary resident. I work with the firm Planometrics. We're based in Avon, and basically what we do is help communities. We work as, since we're in the planning, construction and development, but we help towns with strategic plans and zoning regulations. And we've had a chance to work with a number of towns on incentive housing regulations, workforce housing and other stuff. So, I'm excited to have a chance to do more work in my hometown. So, if we can help, we're prepared to work with you and we'll hire them to help you move in this direction. In terms of administration and in terms of affordable housing restrictions, towns have all done kind of different things. Some communities, the town planner actually handles it, and it's an administrative approval process. We actually helped the town of Guilford create what sort of looks like a 1040 form, which you would go through. We helped the town of Summers put together some approval processes there. We also, a number of towns have said, listen, the housing authority has really kind of set up to manage this type of stuff in terms of the discretion that's required in terms of income verification and things like that. And so, they've used them for administrators. And so, the question really in a sense would be, what do we think fits in best with Simsbury and the approach that we want to use? And a lot of that would depend on what type of land uses we may want to set up. I mean, what are we talking here in terms of the overall process? So, there's some good choices available to us, depending on how we want to approach it.
I think it'd be interesting to hear how some of those towns have handled it, like Guilford or Cheshire, those towns you've worked with. Anyways, there's some precedent set that's, these things have worked here and they haven't worked here. I know it's not boilerplate, but there's got to be some good ideas that come out of it that we can use here.
I think, you know, there's different approaches. The incentive housing zone approach, which is where the grant money comes from, is a very specific approach, which contains some strings associated with it, in terms of what the town has to do to have an IHZ-compliant regulation adopted. We've had towns that have done that and are quite comfortable in that direction. I think the two key parts of that process that I think a town should be aware of is, first of all, the densities are minimum densities in the statute. Those densities are six, 10 or 20 units per acre, which is higher than Simsbury's sort of used to. It's not perhaps inappropriate, given some of the things we've talked about for the town center area, but it's a number that immediately gets people's attention. So, as Hyrum correctly pointed out, the issue of design is a very important one because, and we've gone through this process with other communities to show them different types of housing and ask them what they think the density was, and you can be surprised sometimes what good design can accomplish. And I think the second part of the program that is important for communities to understand is that to be IHZ-compliant, approval has to be site plan approval only. And so, there's not a lot of discretion associated with that. So, some communities, and the benefit for being IHZ-compliant is that the town is then eligible for grants from the state, money, for both adopting the regulation and building units. Historically, the state has not had much money to give those grants. But I've spoken with somebody at OPM, and they're working with the governor and a big push in this direction. So, they think there is going to be money coming in the future. But since we work with communities on building communities, not just building housing, the question really needs to be what works best in Simsbury. And so, if the corner of Plank Hill, it's four units per acre rather than six, then we just stepped off the IHZ bus, but we think that's the right solution for Simsbury. And if it's going to produce affordable housing or housing that people need, then that would be a good solution for us. And do it for that reason, but not for the state. Don't chase the state money if it's going to produce something that you're not happy with. So, in a number of communities we've worked with, they've gone through the analysis process. They have gone into it with the purpose of doing something which complies, but along the way, they said, "You know what? We tried, but it's just not going to work that way. We're going to do it again." And so, I think our, our goal with Hyrum's assistance would be to lay these options out for you as what other communities have done, what's worked, what are the choices available, and make sure that they fit best for the circumstances that are available.
So, you're not interchanging workforce housing and IHZ, or are you?
It's a similar concept, but with a different name and not as strict.
Okay.
I mean, the reaction here was, the strings tied with having to approve the form of the zone with pre-designated sites, is what I think was really, really, you know, put us way off our game on this. It wasn't the idea that...
Ran out of volunteers. Ran out of volunteers, people that had property that they wanted.
We whittled it down to one, and nobody liked that one. So, no, but it was, so the idea of incentive housing is not what we, we had difficulty with. It was tying to specific sites and the wide range of ones that we were left with. The property at the south end of town and the Little Four were sort of extreme ends of this, and we just couldn't get comfortable with what we were doing. So, I think with, Glenn, right?
Yes.
I think with Glenn's help, maybe we could actually come up with some ideas. How should we proceed?
I think that if this discussion's helpful, Glenn and I can start talking about some different options and get those back to you, and get them in front of you, and not on the 30th.
Yeah.
But sometime in the near future. It sort of goes step by step. I don't expect that this is going to take a long time, and Glenn's done it a number of different times. And based upon the discussions that we've had before, I can sort of help get them, get them to where the commission is. I'd kind of like to move this thing forward pretty quick.
I think there's a willingness, I would not speak for everybody, but a willingness to try to keep this, my joking aside, you know, on the agenda perpetually, but to try to get to something that we can actually get our arms around and, you know, all of, and I think this was the right step, Hyrum, is to break it into the sort of, the core elements of what we need to get our arms around, what the sites look like, what the process is, what the product is that's available to the workforce. What does that look like? Is it rental ownership or, we got all hung up on what if it's owned and has a deed versus market versus below-market rental rates. So, those are two very different things to think about, and we just couldn't get our arms around or our heads around it, so.
I think if, following up what Hyrum was talking about, I think we could put together a summary book that talks about other communities that have received the same grants that you have done, what, what directions they took.
That would be helpful.
So, just give you a sense of sort of some benchmarks that are around, and you might say, you know, "We really like what New Canaan did, or we like what Guilford did, or we like what East Hampton did, or we like what another community did."
I think that'd be very helpful. Okay. Great.
So, I'll work with Hyrum and when the timing is right, we'll be back.
Probably in our mid-September meeting would be the time that we could get back involved.
Just in all honesty, and to Glenn too, and we haven't even talked about numbers yet, that some of the grant money was expended. There's no question about that. So, we'll get together on what was left over and Glenn will decide how much he can do for what we've got left.
For the little pittance we have left?
Why do you live in town?
When you stop, when you're driving by. Dave?
I have a question before we're ready to quit.
All right.
In our corrections to the minutes, we noted that it was a five-to-one decision. Shouldn't we note who the one was in the event that somebody wanted to go back and...
Commissioner Peterson.
Okay.
Yeah. We should always do that, state the...
If you want to bring something for reconsideration, you have to have someone who voted with the motion. So, if you don't know who it is, who they are, they can't bring it up. So, Robert's rules, everything.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Good work tonight.
Two other quick things.
Yes.
Really quick, I promise. I mentioned to you last time that we had talked to some of the property owners on the south end of Hop Meadow, just north of Vladimir Lane up to the firehouse. I, in the process of contacting those property owners, I haven't finished it yet, but I'll have that back to you. Again, probably not on the 30th, but at your next meeting, so we can talk about that, to get that zoning rationalized in that area. And then the last thing I have is that we did receive today an application for the Big Y on the Wagner property.
Okay.
They're anxious to move forward as well. So, I'll be talking to you about that in the near future. Copy the application?
Is that likely, that's likely to be on our agenda in two weeks?
I think so.
Yeah.
In two weeks?
Yeah, I think so.
Special meeting?
I think so.
It's a special meeting.
I think the other items are going to be relatively...
Will that be a public hearing?
Yes.
They're already sending letters out that they're moving to town, so we better do something, Glenn.
Yeah. So, at the risk of violating my own rules, now it's 9:35, I will just say that the timing and the disclosure of that development and the interaction with the DRB and the fact that they've... and the fact that they've already met with them twice and our committee, the Commission is even unaware of all of this, is part of the fundamental problems that we have with communications and coordination and the relative role of the two, the Commission and the Design Review Board. To me, this is right at the crosshairs of, you know, and it's not that anybody did anything wrong. I'm glad that they will have seen the design and be able to give us input within two weeks, but I have to say I was blindsided by the newspaper article announcing the, I mean, it's embarrassing to, I mean, I was, heard the rumors, but we should be well aware of those kind of applications and stuff.
It's a great opportunity for perhaps joint meetings early on in the process, something like that.
For sure.
Something like that would be a good idea.
So when do you think that's going to come, in August or September?
The, well, the application's filed today, and so I would probably suggest even starting it maybe in July, yeah.
We've got 45 days, right?
Well, we don't have to have 35 days from the day it's filed.
Yeah.
So, they've asked it...
They're not here in August, so...
Well, that's the thing, we end up in the middle of September before the next regular meeting, so, you know, and I'll take a look at it and see what shape it's in, Design Review still has to make their comments, but, you know, before it goes too far, we'll get it posted on your page pretty quickly so you can see it in the next couple of days. The application's in the office, anybody wants to take a look at it.
Yeah.